Good evening, everyone. Thankfully, the air is working in here. We're going to get started. Today is June 24th, 2025. We are here for the Revere Board of Education regular meeting. Mr. Burdine, will you please call the roll?
This is Brackett.
Here.
Mr. Hyde. Here. Mr. Malik.
Here.
This is Rainey.
Here.
This is Stein.
Here.
Okay, if I could ask everybody to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll be leaving today since we don't have the little.
Should we clap for you?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have no presentations this evening. We do have public speaks to agenda items. So if there's anybody that would like to speak to any agenda items, now is your time. We don't have a podium, so you can just probably speak from your chair if you want to. We can sure we can all hear from here. Just I just asked that you identify yourself and.
So I have a question, comment from somebody, a different, somebody else who's wasn't able to speak. So regarding the retirement or the yet retirements of two administrators, so that would be appropriate.
Sure, you'd like to make a comment about.
Yeah, comment slash question, which I know questions won't be answered, but just to kind of like put it out there for the board to think about maybe how to present it to the public.
Okay.
So Lauren Lightberg, again, this is a question from a community member. With the retirements of two of your top three board office administrators, what is the process and timeline for hiring these two key positions? And are there plans for any community involvement?
Well, it's not a board function. The board doesn't hire these individuals. That's superintendent's function.
Okay.
And it would be based upon his timeline. So.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there anybody else that wanted to talk?
What did you say?
I said, I've figured it was just you, but I didn't want to speak for everybody else. Okay, Board of Agenda Items, we do not have any at this time. I do see Ms. Burke in the audience, and I know she has an update, so.
Just a couple, yeah. So the CBCC Board met on May 22nd. And prior to the meeting, we celebrated several things. We celebrated adult diploma recognition, scholarship recipients, new staff, retiring staff, and other students achieving student recognition through competitions throughout the school year. Superintendent Magus reported 407 completers this year at the high school level. And my notes say that there were program name changes. I think I may have alluded to some of the program name changes at prior meetings. Also says see agenda for six name changes. Of course, I did not bring the agenda, so my apologies. If you're interested in those program name changes, I'm more than happy to get those for you. But the name changes to the program were driven by the advisory councils that they have for each of the programs, and then also in the interest of creating a clear pathway for students. So for example, there are two programs, Transition to Work and Sales and Service, that are essentially catering to the same student population. They're combining them all into Transition to Work so that there's less confusion about what those pathways are. And our next meeting is this Thursday at 6:00.
Can I ask you a quick question? I'm just curious. You said 407 completers, I think? Is that like, is that a normal number? Is that up or down or?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I was thinking about that on the way here. I know that Superintendent Magus, his goal is 1,000 high school students, right? And so if you cut that in half, juniors and seniors, 400 is inching closer to that number. We know that there's some attrition that happens from junior to senior year. So I don't know how 400 and some compares to past years, but I think it's relatively on the way to what he wants to achieve there.
Cool. Perfect. Thanks.
I have a question. What is the, how many kids from our school system now? Have you seen an uptick in percentage that are utilizing?
Yeah, so I, I'll get those numbers. I have them at home. Revere is seeing an uptick. It's a slow uptick. We are one of the smaller representative schools. We typically have about 60 students or so that attend, so I would split that between the grades just depending probably more juniors than seniors. But what you look at for the attendance is that it definitely bottomed out in COVID, and we are seeing a steady increase over the years since COVID, all the time that's going up.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burke. Mr. Burdine, please share your agenda.
Thank you. I would propose we take all of Room Number Eight. One through seven as one action item, please.
Still move?
Second.
Minutes from the two meetings you listed. The financial report was sent out to you in advance of revenue. Was pretty close for about 22,000 off my estimated mark, short on that. The bulk of that is my tip payment estimate was slightly elevated from reality. Usually I vote for conservatives, so I'm a little surprised myself that I missed that. But it's not a lot of money when you look at nearly $50 million. So the expense side, we are running through 11 months, slightly negative $200,000. Again, the supplies expenditures, we typically spend about 82% of budgeted funds, and we're trending right now about 92% for this fiscal year. So that's creating a bit of the negative variance in there. We certainly have sufficient cash reserves to cover that. And then the county fiscal officer tax collection fees were higher as our tax collections continue to increase. Those dollars were high, so I was slightly off on that estimate as well. So that's the bulk of that story. Asset deletions, we have outdated social studies materials, math materials that were submitted by our curriculum department. We also had some library materials that are, have been purged from shelves at the middle school. And I think that might, that's all of that for those, those three items. Those lists are attachments in the agenda. The fourth item, the amount of purchase orders that list is in where the BOs were submitted in advance of the invoice date. So then there are $3,000 I'm required to bring those through to your approval. The donations, if you bear with me, I'd like to read these. This is a long one tonight. RMS PTA, $3,000 for the Washington DC trip, the legacy projects for our eighth grade students and sixth grade field day. $3,000 from Edward and Kathleen Butler, Carol Anders for the RHS Paulette Memorial Scholarship. Richfield Library, $1,000 for the Friends of Richfield Library Scholarship. Henry B. and Francis W. Christensen Foundation, $3,000 to the Christensen Foundation Scholarship. Plus $1,000 from Fuss Properties Limited to the Barona and Long Memorial Scholarship. $500 from Stephen Polly Widow for the R. Scholarship that was presented. $2,000 from Revere Youth Football for the Papana Memorial Scholarship and the Eric Moriah Memorial Scholarship. Revere Schools Foundation for their series of scholarships, $8,000. Bath Church, $330 for students needing assistance for lunch and other fees. That's, I think, second month in a row they've donated money for that cause. Carson Strong Foundation to the Carson Strong Scholarship, $500. Protein Partners of Ohio LLC, Julian Charles Loper, Lucille Loper, and Chloe Bear, $1,500 for the Lisa Loper Scholarship. The Ben Christman Foundation, $4,000 for the Ben Christman Memorial Scholarship. And I. Bailey LLP to the Apple Gross Scholarship, $500. It wouldn't be me if I didn't say it for probably the, I don't know, 40th or 50th consecutive month that we're very fortunate with the generosity that comes from this community to this school district. So thank you to all of those groups, individuals, et cetera. And then the last two documents, FY '26 Additional Appropriations Measure, I mentioned last week. This has all funds in it, but you know, most people focus on general fund, and the numbers we work off of are what you approved in that made forecast to build these budgets that we allocate to our departments and buildings. Feel comfortable with that. As I mentioned last month, due to the attrition savings, I think we'll see a downtick in that. Might see some adjustment because of my misses on my estimates this year before, and again, the fall. And then the item seven is the amended appropriations measure for this year, which through each of these monthly financial reports, the budget adjustments are part of that financial package. I like to package those into one document at the end of the year that I can then hand the auditors, and they could see the culmination of all those changes throughout the year. And it saves time and money in those audit costs when we can do that in two documents essentially. So there's nothing new in that other than what you've seen across these months of this fiscal year, which will close on Monday. So we're almost there.
Any questions for Mr. Burdine?
No.
Just to echo what you said, Mr. Burdine, very appreciative of all the financial contributions that our donors provide to this district all year round. So thank you to them. You want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde. Yes. This is Rainey.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
Okay, Mr. White, Superintendent's Agenda.
Okay, Room Number Nine, Number One A, I'm just going to stick with that one. I go on recommending it. It is not with my heart. We made this recommendation for Mrs. Obergas and Ms. Krantz. But they think that DRS change with the 32 years have a situation now where they can submit resignation for the purpose of retirement. That would be my first recommendation today.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Congratulations to both of you, but you know, we're not happy to speak.
Thank you for everything.
Yeah. Thank you both so much. We're going to miss you. Yeah, won't be the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
We have to. Yes.
Okay, I recommend Room Number Nine, Letters B through I's Consent Agenda.
All right, still move?
Second. Thank you. Letter B, we have a Leave of Absence for Katie Laxall. C is the Change in Position for Meredith Woolley, seventh grade mathematics to eighth grade mathematics. And then we have some new hires. Letter D, Lee Tremble, Isabel Doron, Leah Parish, Camelia. Well, letter E, we have the Additional Hours for some of our staff who will be working through a kindergarten early insurance appeal. And then we have a letter F, the Co-Curricular Non-Athletic Supplemental Contracts. And G is the Athletic Supplemental Contracts for Fall '25, '26 school year. We have a salary increase at letter H for our Allen and Bill. And letter I is the Resignation of Ryan Warner, Intervention Specialist at Revere Middle School. He's going to become Assistant Principal.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. White? I just want to welcome the two new teachers and two new intervention specialists to Revere, and then thank Mr. Warner for his time at the middle school. Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde. This is Brackett.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
All right. Then I recommend a consent agenda for Room Number Nine, Number Two, Letters A through H.
All right, so move.
Second.
All right, letter A, we have extended time for Helen. For our athletic department secretary. Letter B, we have co-curricular non-athletic supplemental contracts. C are the athletic supplemental contracts for this fall. Letter D, we have some substitute custodians for this school year. Letter E is then substitute custodians for this summer. Go to E. And then F, we have the Summer 2025 Paint Crew. And then the letter G is some resignations that we have. David Cumio and Evan Morrison.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. White? Okay, Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Number three, Student Services. We have the Kids Link School District Contract. You know what? I'm going to recommend the letters A, number, let's go Room Number Consent. Room Number Nine, Number Three, Letters A through N is a consent agenda.
Second.
All right. So number three, Letter A, we have the Kids Link School District Contract for some of our students and Kids Link. And then letter B is PSI Associates as our nursing services. Letter C is the Greenlee Family Centered Services for the Deaf. And then letter D is the Gruy Garfus, Sound Music Therapy Agreement. Letter E is our Cross-Tread Solutions Terminating Services Agreement. F is our TES, that's our BCBA, Behavior Specialist Agreement. Letter G, we have the Summit County ESC for student placement. H is our Contract for Extended School Year Vision Services during the extended school year. We have letter I, the Thrive Early Learning Center for student placement. The same, right, J for Applewood Centers. And then Morgan E. Mend is also, is an Individualized Structured Literacy Program. Okay, and then L, we have the LLC, the Tungents. LLC is an option for translation support if needed. And then letter M, Lead Programming Kent for one of our students. And then N, we have the SLP Extended School Year Services for our extended school year speech needs.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. White? Okay, Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Hyde. Yes. This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
Number four, we have Other Business. Letter A is Policies, Second and Final Reading. We have the Revised Policies listed there. You know, if there had been a question.
Yeah. So why don't we do the Revised separate than the New? So we'll do, break those down into four A, I, I guess. I will be all the Revised, and then AB will be, or, let me see how to do this. Do A1 and A2. A2 will be the New, okay? So we'll do that separate. So regarding the Revised, I need a motion and a second for A1.
Make a motion.
Second.
Do you want to add anything to those, or does anybody have any questions, I guess, from, on these?
I just have one comment on 605, just because we got some comments on it at our last month's meeting. And I just wanted to comment that we did reach out to our legal counsel and to get explanation from that and the way that that is written and what it includes and has to include. So I just wanted to clarify that the.
Yeah, I don't think anybody liked what, how it was written.
Yeah, right. And so we just clarified with legal counsel, and they confirmed and that that's the way it must be written and must include that language.
Right, because if we didn't, it would take us out of compliance.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brackett. Mr. Burdine?
This is Brackett.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
Okay, next is the New Parents Bill of Rights. It's 9.39. I'm going to make a motion to amend the Parents' Bill of Rights, specifically Paragraph Two, where it says, "Parent in writing", to delete the word "writing" and add in, or "in writing" and add in verbally of any substantial change. So I need a second for that.
Second.
Is there any comments or questions regarding this policy?
Okay, so I would like to speak on the policy. I had emailed Mr. White several weeks ago with a number of changes that I'd liked. I just wanted to communicate my desire to make some changes. One specifically was kind of related to this part. And while I think we're going to have some additional discussions and kind of tighten up this policy and get additional input, my concern is the safety of the kids. And what I see is the way to make this policy safest for the kids. And while I can appreciate the fact that changing it from written to verbal is definitely an improvement for my own personal beliefs and feelings on this policy, it didn't take it quite far enough for the students. I was hoping for more of a policy that provided that communication in person with parents and counselors or crisis counselors or psychologists to ensure the safest possible situation for the students, and it just doesn't quite get there. I do understand that there are some complexities and always having to do it in person. So I look forward to as we dive more into this policy and kind of help clarify things both for our students and for our staff, that these will be conversations that we can have to tighten it up. But I just have additional concerns that I would like to continue to talk about.
Do they both have any more comments?
No, I would just add that, I mean, I know Kasia and I have discussed this, but my concern is if we put too much of a restriction on it, then it could make it very difficult for families who are separated, you know, custody issues, or parents who are not in town or whatever, when that communication takes place, that if we limit it to just in person, if we will make it too restrictive, where then we actually can't get the information across. So I agree. I think it's worth conversations, and I think we'll do that through the listening and learning and find a way to do it. But I just want to make sure we also don't make it so specific that we then restrict ourselves from being able to actually share the information. So yes, just something that we'll work through.
Thank you.
We've had good conversation about, yes.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about it. I've talked to Ms. Brackett as well. I've, you know, I've received three emails from people regarding the policy. All three are here, present today. So I do appreciate what you guys have provided. I've read it. I understand the viewpoint. I agree with some of it. I know that we are under some restrictions as far as the state goes. We have to have this in place before July. I've had communications with Mr. White. He has pledged to me that he is going to do his listening and learning tour as it relates to this particular policy, because I think it's important that not only do we have our community weigh in, but we have our teachers, our counselors, and perhaps even our students give their opinion, because I think that's important. And while though this may not be our best work, I guess I could say, I know that it's something that the state's requiring us to do. And knowing that Mr. White has promised to go out and find out what everybody wants and what might be best for our district, I anticipate that there will be amendments done hopefully this fall. I know the, when did you say you were going to start the?
August and I want to do it early September, because I know a lot of people would like to see us make those changes as soon as possible, but we know too, like July and August, people are traveling. So our plan right now is to put dates out. I've got August 4th, 11th, and 18th on the calendar right now for like a noon zoom, 5:00 and 3:00, and then we'll get dates like in September as soon as we get school started and get some, some dates in there early in September. Hopefully have something for you by the September Board meeting.
And, you know, obviously, we've, we've seen as a district how sometimes this stuff can divide our district. My hope is that we talk as a community. We are open about it. We try to eliminate the divide and know that ultimately we're here to protect our students, protect our families, and our staff. So with that goal in mind, you know, that's, that's where I fall. I can only speak for myself. But I'm, depending on where everybody votes, we'll see if this passes, but that's where I'm at right now.
So, Mr. White, I just want to confirm. So you're thinking we should have this all in place that we can potentially have a vote at the September meeting? If we have any amendments?
Yeah, yeah.
First read.
Oh, first read, right. That's what I, that's what I should have said. Sorry, that's what I should have said.
When is our September meeting? No guarantees, but that's, that's, that's the hope, right?
September meeting will be this.
I do also want to thank, I've had individual conversations with everybody on this, and I just think, like, as a board, we've been able to have some really constructive and lovely conversations around this, and I'm very appreciative of everybody's willingness to listen. It speaks to the divide, and I don't, I did not feel it on this policy, so I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
No.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all. Stay tuned. As I anticipated, there will be more.
All right, Mr. White?
All right. So for B, we have no action. It's the Curriculum Recommendation, Second and Final Reading. I did speak with Mrs. Roach today. She's not heard from anybody, any questions or anything of that nature. And then.
So we, we.
We are voting, but.
Yes. So we have to vote on B. It's the Second and Final Reading.
Right.
Right. I'll motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Did you want to comment any further?
I just wanted to put no action, sorry. Yeah, that's good.
Any questions for Mr. White? All right, Mr. Burdine?
This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
All right, I believe the rest of my turn.
We'll keep you in check if we're not.
Let's go for, you recommend for C, D, and E is a consent. So move.
Second.
All right, so Data Sharing Agreement for Summit Education Initiative. The letter C, and then we have a memorandum of understanding for the School Resource Officer, Summit County Sheriff's Department. And letter E is the NeoNet shared services agreement. Questions on any of those?
Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Hyde, yes. This is Stein.
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Malik.
Yes.
This is Rainey.
Yes.
As I was just saying, before F, I have no action as notes. Did ask Ms. Krantz if she would just take a moment to speak before F.
Sure. I'll come. Sorry. So the CCIP that's on the agenda is just, it's a historical funding platform for the state of Ohio. That's true for all schools across the state. Over the last few years, the state has created a different structure and different system for what that looks like. It's through a program called EdSteps. Each school is in a cohort, and so it's been kind of a layered cycle about where each district applies for the one needs or works through their one needs assessment, then creates a one plan. That one plan then drives your funding platform. So that funding platform for us, well, for everybody, is a newer funding platform. The allocations are a bit delayed this year. It's a new platform, so it'll take a little while to get that worked out. So the funds that come through there that you see delineated, there's actually lots of federal funds that come through that platform. So when those, those are open every year, and we write those, we have to have those in by the first substantial date of the end of June. And what that looks like is we have funding allocations for title programming. Title 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is not just one, but Title 1 would serve students who are struggling maybe in math or reading. Title 2, we can do lots of different things with. It might be a class size reduction. Title three, title four, they all are different things. Title four is for our whole child. We also have funds that I, that Abby and I collaborate on, Mrs. Castle, around IDEA and preschool. So what those funds do is not only help our students, but the IDEA B funds also supports, and our preschool, it supports both salaries, and it also supports some of the purchase services as well. So when you see those referenced, that's what it's referring to, and that's our fund, they're pretty usual and customary every year. Title funds go, for example, title ones go a lot to our salary. And I also was just at our, we have one of the coolest, by the way, if you don't know this. We have one of the coolest title one funds, I think, in the state of Ohio. Some of our teachers have come together at Richfield. And most schools do like a literacy night and a math night. They actually work with our students and families all throughout the summer. So every Monday night for about six weeks in the summer, students who have been identified with data needing some support, they go with their families and they go in small groups, and they work around phonemic awareness and phonics deficits. So I was just there last night, and the teachers do an amazing job. So I want to give kudos to them for committing to that all throughout the summer and help preventing that summer slide and getting them proactively ready for the next summer year. So I really say hats, hats off to them. But anyway, that's, in a nutshell, what that is referring to. And every year, we need to make sure that we lift that up in our community so that we have the opportunity to talk with you a little bit about it and to take any questions that you might have in regards to that. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, but I will say, I love that Monday night program. Yeah. Having been a first grade teacher and those young minds in the summer do have a big slide, so that's a great program. Love that. Great job. Yeah. And I actually asked them to present at a federal programs conference a few years ago. And, I mean, it's just impressive, because like I said, it's not a one program and done. It's an ongoing program. So thank you to Ms. Castle for great collaboration and Mr. Burdine, Ms. Evans. We collaborate on that CCIP. Like I say, that's changing over now towards the one plan, and it's gonna be lots of fun. But we'll get there, and that is, that's forthcoming, and the allocations should be, hopefully, all dropped soon, and we'll get that all ready to go. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, letter G is our high school volleyball team's overnight tournament trip to Cedar Point for July twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions?
That sounds fun.
Hopefully they do well.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Burdine?
Mr. Malick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Some informational discussion items. Our July work session will be held Tuesday, July eighth, beginning at five thirty here in the admin building. The regular meeting will be held Tuesday, July fifteenth, at five thirty here, also in the admin building. At this time, we do open it up to the public and community for any announcements. So if anybody has anything to say, just one other thing I wanted to make sure I said again was to thank Ms. Arbogast and Ms. Krantz for their dedication to the district and for your hard work. And we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and enjoy the summer too.
It'll be for next month, though. We're gonna have to come back, yeah. So we'll see you all.
All right. Does anybody else have any community announcements or comments?
I was gonna say something on the comment. Where, do I stand up or can I just sit?
You can sit.
Yes, awesome. All right. Um, I just really quickly want to talk about the culture at Richfield, because I think it's sort of something that we're not directly speaking on in, in our, in our district, and I feel like we really need to, just because my experience at Bath has been very different than my experience at Richfield. And so I want to just say personally, when I moved back to Revere, I realized how lucky I was to grow up here. It's not just the strong academics, but we have a strong community that we love. And I came here and I found so many amazing people in this community. My children started in this district when everything was starting to open up against COVID. And I admit, as a first time parent, like I desperately just wanted my kids to be okay socially. And so there were so many, I bought into all these extra events, extra planned things, because I think that's what all parent, young parents were hungry for. Unfortunately, I think that I played into the culture of like more access for adults that can come at the expense of teachers and students. I wanted to add more events so I could see my kids be happy at school. And I willingly sent money for extras, not realizing that not all the kids were getting to buy the Kona ice cream truck, buy the Swenson's truck when it come in. Like it was only for certain kids. And I wanted to teach, teachers to have events that let me in, not realizing how much and how seriously they take their academic schedules and their milestones. I wanted to be able to tell me my kids were okay. As I watched the culture become more fractured over the four, past four years, I just wanted to find the words that say stop. I reviewed board policies and realized what we're not putting. I realized some of the boundaries that I've pushed as a result of my needs. For example, I volunteer all the time. When I see my daughter at the school, I can, I can just wave hi, and it's great. If my son sees me and I wave hi to him, he is devastated the entire day, right? And I had a experience with a trend teacher that was super willing to tell me, hey, Carter doesn't, you know, if you're volunteering, it's great, but that's not awesome for everything, you know? And it's great, somebody should be willing to tell me that. I think that there needs to be a culture shift at Richfield where we realize that we're supporting the teachers first and foremost. I am asking that we review our school safety plans. I have no interest in seeing them, but just make sure that they're following board policy. I would suggest that we also get the sheriff's department, now that we have others to look at our school's policy, because they actually see lots of districts. And we have only people from Copley and Bath, so I don't know how Fairlawn's read it. I don't know how Copley's read it when we have things like custody cases. My dad worked in, as, he wrote school policies, stuff for safety. I also want to directly address that there is a school board member here, Natalie, and we've talked about that, that I do believe is in the building too much. And I, it doesn't have to be that she means harm, but if you are a school board member and you are talking to admin, head admin in the building the day after the last board meeting, that's a problem, because you're not being treated as a parent, you're being treated as a school member there. And so I'm just going to, I think I've talked for way more than five minutes, but I think that we have amazing teachers. I think we have amazing teachers. There are some that were really good coming back from COVID because of their ties to the social and community. And I think they maybe got held above some other teachers that are really good at creating that quiet, safe space. The teachers that are from the outside that can say, hey, stop, maybe this is not a good idea, you know? And so I just, it is a wonderful place. I just want to empower the teachers.
Is there any other comments?
Yes, I would like to piggyback off of that, being a teacher myself.
Identification.
Oh, Corey Rorba. That access to the building, and yes, I'm, I'm a middle school teacher. And we know, like, my daughters both went through Revere Elementary. And it was a lot more limited then, because again, I had a child that was a leg clinger, and it would throw Chloe into next week if she saw me, and I couldn't stay, and I had limited time. I was teaching at Revere Middle School at the time. This, you know, in regards to the Parent Bill of Rights as well, like, we are, we are designed as educators. We have your children's best interests. Revere is one of the best districts in the state of Ohio, and you hire the best, okay? I'm all about a mentoring program. We have young teachers coming in, some which are my former students, which deserve a chance and not be held over or being told on, or all of this bullying per se, or what's happening. I mean, it's just absolutely inappropriate. We bring a brand new administrator in, and on day one is, is met with PTA resistance. You weren't our first choice. I, who had to relocate my life from Revere Middle School to Aurora Harmon Middle School, if I was met with, you weren't our first choice, how that would have impacted me a great deal. Because trust me, Harmon was not my first choice, Revere was my first choice. And therefore, we set up the building right there as an automatic divide in what parents want versus what our administration hired people to do their job, and to not even allow someone to get the benefit of the doubt. And I know firsthand, my, one of my really close friends worked over Tara. She was our assistant principal at Hudson and had nothing but kind and wonderful words to say. I think it's different when it comes to women, me being a strong woman, head girls basketball coach. We are viewed totally different than men. And that is held against us. A woman that is stern, that has standards and expectations, all the women, which we know that is Richfield Elementary's climate, along with PTA members, will all get all up at Keville because somebody's being rubbed the wrong way, because somebody's being professional. And I think that doesn't adjust this for our teachers, for our staff, and for our students. Our students are there to learn. If we look at test scores, there aren't times for, you know, all of these extras. We do the best that we can, but I know as a teacher, we are under the gun constantly. And the amount of stress it is, even in our moments of like middle school, when we have grandparents tease, things like that, our whole day is just shot. It's shot. Discipline is shot, trying to maintain a regular schedule is shot, and we are under the gun for state testing during those times. And this is a part of allowing our kids to grow. Trust that you have chosen this district because of great teachers. And trust me, when I was a kid in middle school, sometimes it wasn't because of amazing administration. It was because we have amazing teachers that kept that ship float. And I will stand by that through the end, and I will continue to do that with teachers here in Revere Local Schools. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Enjoyed the, the nice warm weather. And I'll need a motion and a second to adjourn, please. We do have, I'm sorry, we do have a need for executive session. So discuss the employment of a public employee. Sorry, voice is gonna have to stay a little longer. There will not be any action when we come out. Somebody have a motion and a second, please?
Motion. Second.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mr. Malick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
All right, we're in executive session. Thank you all.